Today is Tuesday, January 19th, 2016. Afternoon work session.
I think that this actually initially came to my attention, I think all of us were copied on it by Representative Pele. And it is being discussed as it relates to Coach Howell and the fact that there have been some inquiries on naming this Sarasota High School Gymnasium is what I believe it is. So the information I had found was that when you review this, we have different circumstances in which it falls under we would be able to name a school. But however, my understanding is that they were told that there was a significant financial contribution required of $750,000, which is a lot of money. So I went back and I know you guys all have this attached, which is what happens with Superintendent Norris when it breaks down the cost. And really, I kind of see it two ways on one of your guys' input. I understand why we have, you know, in order to bring in additional revenue from a donation standpoint. However, I think there should be exceptions to when we could and whether we create a process. I think, in my opinion, when I heard this, it kind of sets the wrong, sends the wrong message. I mean, we have people who devote their life to our community, to their students, and to be able to honor them in a variety of ways. I just think this is definitely something we should be talking about when visiting. So I wanted to open it up. Again, you know, when I say reviewing 8.55, I don't know that we necessarily need to change it because within here we have 8.55-1D. A school building may be named in memory or in honor of a person who has made significant contributions to our state, county, or nation. So if we, and I, so I want feedback, but my thought process was in the event we put together a committee or something that could be presented to the board in the event we would want to review what those parameters are outside of the substantial financial contribution. Or, you know, we can have different scenarios.
Okay. I also know that, I see that this policy was written in 2001. I believe that in 2005 Superintendent Norris sent out a letter and I think they clarified and it was revised and the dollar amount was revised in 2006. Can anybody lend any background?
I can get, I've collected some backgrounds. I had Zoe do a search in terms of what was available, so I can give you a little bit of background. The original policy of 8.55 back in, I believe, 2001 was during a time when there was financial need in the district. It was one of many strategies Wilma Hamilton was looking at to help with a financial situation. And then this idea of naming parts of a facility or an entire school could benefit the financial situation of the district and work with the education foundation to provide a process. So that's kind of where it came from. The first, just in terms of the interpretation, the first, friends one is only for naming of entire school, new school facilities. So all of those have to do with new school facilities, which traditionally in our, we've had committees that have named a new school, make recommendations. And traditionally in our district, that tends to be geographic. But that's just about the process of naming a total new school.
Okay.
Then the one time that there was a gift given was for the Philippi Shores Media Center. It was a $100,000 gift. And part of the revision, I think, was to clarify how much a media center would be for an elementary. And John Swift gave a donation in memory of his mother to name Philippi Shores. Since that time, there's been other discussions to honor the memory of some individuals.
Wasn't there one at Sarasota for Walter Melis?
For, I think you're right, although I didn't see a record of it, and that was a classroom that was named. But I think you're absolutely right because I remembered a classroom and it was at Sarasota Middle. So I think there's been two donations, one a media center of $100,000 and one for a classroom that was less, but I'm not sure what the amount was. Then there have been some other individuals that a desire was made by groups to honor them. One was Mary Watts, one was Gwen Rigel. And what would happen in those situations, because there wasn't a donation involved, was they set aside a corner in the media center, one at Gocio, one at M.E., to kind of honor.
Is there a discussion for Jack Cruz?
There has been a recent discussion of to honor a previous band director. And so they are raising money for a deal.
That we're required.
For an outdoor.
At this point.
Yeah.
But this is the board's policy, so I'm trying to, I'm going to tell you what your options are as a board. The language that has to do with the naming of a portion really says the board may. So the board could choose to not require a financial. I mean, it's really, even under your current policy, you have some latitude. And there's, you know, certainly you can discuss the frozen cons of doing that. But I don't see anything in the current policy that would preclude you if you chose as a board to do a naming of a portion of a school without having a financial donation. You just have to decide if there's going to be a process because there'll be other requests and how you might handle that. But I don't think you have options that don't even require you to change your policy if you want to go forward differently. But that's kind of up to the board. Caroline?
I do not want to make these people pay to have a builder name after them. So it would be my recommendation that we just allow the name to be put on the gym, to be put on the gym. It's ridiculous. The man gave over 50 years of his life to this education through our community and Sarasota High School. And then to charge him or the people in our community for him to be able to put his name on there, to me is insane.
And I don't disagree with you. The concern that I have, and I brought up Jack Cruz. The concern that I have, and Lori said, there's going to be other requests.
Right.
So where do we? And I'm not, I'm not saying that I don't, that I have an issue with what brought up this conversation today.
Right, right.
I don't. But I also see that, you know, we've told the folks at Riverview that they needed to raise money to honor, to name the music suite after Jack Cruz. So obviously, if I was them, I'd come back to us and say, well, you're not charging now. So, and then what can, what kind of can of worms do you, I hope, and I'm not saying it's a financial thing, but perhaps we still have to have some kind of parameters. Otherwise, we get, we're going to get to the point where every single school is going to have a request to name something.
And if I, I agree with that. You have to be careful. I think that that's why I said, you know, I don't know if we should put together, we should put together perhaps a process. I mean, even if you look at 8.55, it says no procedure necessary. Maybe we come up with something and then it goes as recommendations brought to the board and then we decide. I mean, because I think that, and it won't be, it won't be an easy decision, of course, because you, but, but I think that, you know, even when initially talking to the superintendent about this, we, it could exactly, to your point, open up a lot of opportunities or people may think one way. And so what we decide as a board is coming up with what those parameters are. I just, and I think it sounds like some of us have shared this feeling, was kind of appalled. It just sends the wrong, wrong, wrong message to our staff and to the education, you know, those who are educators and truly devote their lives so much more beyond. There's, you know, there's a way, no way to quantify it. So I'd like to see us, if we're all willing on the same page, you know, come to some agreement on what that process looks like or if you, you know, if you have any recommendations of such and then moving forward hopefully.
True. Jane? I don't think it is the same situation as Riverview High School, right? Because they are building an outdoor band shell and it is requiring $165,000, as I understand it, to build the band shell in honor of the band director. And I think it's a wonderful tribute to him. I really don't think we need to change the policy from my standpoint. I think this would be a very good thing to do for Sarasota High School and for the family and in the memory of Coach Howell. So whatever, if we decide to put up some type of a procedure in place, I'm fine with that too. But to make a long story short, I think we do this and it's, we're building the gym. So it's not the same thing as a new school or an addition to or a special addition. So I'm, I'm.
I, I agree with Jane. I do not think we need to put a process in place for this. I just don't. I told you that this morning when we spoke. I, I just believe this is the right thing to do and we should just do it.
And I too think we, it's, it's not the whole facility that's new, but the gym will be new. And I, and I talked to the group, you know, did they think that the dedication, you know, in the front hall or wherever, they were thinking of doing it? And they said, no, they, they didn't think that was enough. They wanted to be able to see the building in his name. And I, I don't think we need to change any policy.
That's right.
But I, I think we do have to have a concern that we will get other requests.
So how do we want to handle that in the future? As if?
So from what I've heard, then I will bring to the next board meeting, not today's, but our following one, a recommendation to name the gym under Coach Howell.
Very good. Thank you.
I'll pass that on to the Riverview High School Music Department's Booster Club.
All right.
Because I think we did tell them they needed the financial.
Well, we'll have to look at the circumstances for us to help pay for the actual facility.
Because I'm not sure I agree with what Jane said about it doesn't cost them anything. But again, I have actually know, I think it's a great thing to do at Sarasota High School. I'm just, I know we told Riverview High School Music Department something.
But the, the band shell isn't in our building plan though, is it?
No. Is it in addition?
So I'll, I'll get some clarification because I am, I'll get clarification if the money being raised was for the actual piece of equipment. Okay. We'll take a moment to break if you all want to leave. I can understand that. Thank you.
Oh, really? Okay. The next on the agenda is Caroline Zucker, process for making a motion when not in favor of an agenda item.
Right.
That's clear.
That's clear?
No, it's not.
That's not clear? Well, I think what we did was fine. I mean, it doesn't matter. You can, you can make the motion as it stands and have somebody second and then vote against it. Or you can change the motion and say you vote decline, whatever the heck the word is. I mean, it, it really doesn't matter.
Can't you just, there's a recommendation on the table, but you can make a motion.
Yes.
And then vote no.
Within that, you know, the topic.
You can. This is the difference.
Yeah.
You absolutely can make your own motion. This was a little bit awkward because it's not like there was alternative. Because you were, your motion is that we choose not to approve.
I'm getting old. We're talking about the calendar, right?
We're talking about the calendar. So the advantage of how it was handled is it couldn't still be done through the E-Agenda. Because it was not changing the motion. And just as sometimes you vote for a motion and sometimes you vote against it, then when you voted, you can do it.
And if we change.
If you change the motion, which also is possible, so there's no wrong. If you change the motion, then it needs to be a voice because we can't use, because the motion has changed. So either way, sometimes the way it's worded and what it is about makes it easier. If there is definitely an alternative, then you might recommend the alternative. But that wasn't the case here. You just didn't want, not want to, the majority did not want to accept what was proposed.
Just like.
So you can handle it either way and it just matters if it's going to be a voice count or if it's going to be an E-Agenda.
And the other thing is.
The other thing that I understand is that if you're not going to vote in favor of something, you should not second the motion.
Or make the motion.
Well, yeah, I mean, there's two theories. You can second it just for discussion purposes. But typically making it would not incline.
Yeah.
I mean, that's my issue.
Making the motion doesn't, doesn't.
So let's just, so through it, just so mentally, let's suppose there was no, nobody was willing to make the motion. Then it would fail automatically. No count would be needed. And then if there, that could have been it. I mean, that would have been, but I think it was some advantage to having an opportunity for discussion.
This, this is what happened, the meeting before on the impact fees. There, there was, the motion in the agenda was to approve the impact fees at half.
Fifty percent.
I, I made the motion. There was no second. It died.
Right.
It died of a lack of a second. And so then when.
Then I made the motion.
Then there was another motion that was made and it's seconded and then we voted on that. But because it was a separate motion, we had to take a voice vote on that.
But this was a little different.
But that's two ways to kill an item on an agenda. One is to vote no and the other is to not support, supported or seconded.
But if it's a motion to approve X, Y, and Z, you shouldn't make the motion if you're not going to approve it.
Right.
Except this, I think when Frank said, I'm going to make this motion for discussion purposes.
That's what Shirley is saying, you should not make a motion that you approve something on the agenda when you're not going to.
No, that's not what I'm saying.
No, that's what Jane is saying.
That's what I was saying.
What are you saying, Shirley?
I'm saying, I thought we did it right. You make a motion for discussion purposes.
Right, and that's fine. But what I'm saying is if you make a motion for approval of X, Y, Z, you shouldn't do that unless you are moving for approval.
Right.
Well, I.
And I, I really didn't know when Frank first started off what, if he was making a motion on that or something. It was a little confusing to me, but whatever.
Have some coffee.
I got it.
Wasn't confusing to anybody else.
Thank you, Frank.
All right. Let's move on. This is sort of in the same vein, like steps we could have taken to be more responsible before the final vote on the proposed calendar. We've got it on the agenda again today. But we had a process set up where the calendar committee met and we, they met and, you know, I suppose the public could have gone and watched that calendar committee talk. But I think if we're going to be changing the calendar by bringing it early a week or two weeks, we know there's concern in the public about that, that perhaps next time, if we want to change the calendar like that, I, I say for, by a week or two weeks, what we do is perhaps have a public forum where they can get together and they can talk about it, like we did when we were rebuilding the high school and stuff. And people can hear both sides because there were some questions that were brought up in the discussion I would have liked answers to. And we didn't have anyone from the calendar committee to be available to do that and I understand why. You said you didn't want them to have to justify their reasoning. Well, I would have liked to have had answers to it and I'm sure the people who were sending in their questions or their comments would have liked to have had a response. Those comments were one way. There was no feedback on those comments.
Well, Roy was, Roy's the one that facilitates that. He's available, because you're, you know, it's voluntary members of a committee that came to consensus. It wasn't that they weren't in agreement with what was recommended. But I hate for a teacher and a parent all of a sudden to feel like they're in that.
They have to justify.
Well, that they have to answer all the questions. That's what Roy is there because he was there as part of the meeting. So he is always there if there is a question that the board would like to see answered. But certainly the structure, the process you have, I guess what happened shows that the process works in that you've got a lot of comments that influenced your decision and, and so we can move forward. I don't know how to, I mean, there will always be differences of opinions. If it's a fact question, a factual question for clarification, certainly we can provide that. But to argue one over the other, it was the consensus of this committee that this was the better recommendation and they made that recommendation and then the community gives input and you have an advertise in a very open process that we even facilitated to get more comments than allowed for that.
And I would say, my 15 years on the board, this is the first time we've had this come up with a calendar. So it's not like every time we do, because this was a major change, at least a lot of people thought it was a major change. But generally, it's not that controversy. I personally think the process worked fine and we ought to just keep the process the way it is.
Did we not meet, did we not start schooling earlier time?
Yeah, we had before. That's when all the say our summer votes went to the legislature.
But I will say that in hindsight, watching how we did it, I'm, I'm happy that, you know, had those, had the number of parents come out and speak against it, the fact that we were hearing feedback that so many parents weren't aware of it. It was put out there, but the robo-call, I think substantially helped to get feedback. I mean, that's when we really started to get a flood. And so hopefully, moving forward, because we do use that, we have, you know, feedback from families saying, we get them too much. But when we really need them, we didn't use it. So, and that could be, that's obviously maybe potentially an opinion on when we use it, you know, what's the priority or not. But, you know, I think that being part of the process may definitely open it up and whether we do town halls. I mean, I think any way you can make someone aware, especially something like that where people are very.
Well, I think if they're going to want to change the calendar and make it earlier a week or two weeks, they're, I think they're going to have to, you call it defend, but I would say explain or sell it and, and have it in a more open forum.
But I will do.
It's my opinion, otherwise it's going to happen.
Anytime we have something that will impact the community, we ought to do robo-call. We ought to do it. I mean, just as a matter of fact.
Or, but they.
And we know that it's going to impact, we knew that was going to impact the community.
But there's still no way for the community to.
It's my way.
To, to give a voice to the calendar committee. I mean, because once the calendar committee made their decision, it was made. And then, then it's vote no and start over again.
You don't want them, I wouldn't want them interfering with the calendar committee. I would rather them go to the superintendent or come to us or, you know.
Didn't the calendar committee take what we learned from this and?
They did. They were not in full agreement, as understandable, because they had a different perspective. What I would suggest is, is next time they come forward, not with the, the one that's been adjusted, but for next year, but the one after that, when they, if they make a change, that they bullet the reasons why. So that at least you get from their perspective, if they've made a significant change, the rationale for it, an explanation, so that at least that explanation is there. But I, I don't want them to be in the position of the board. It was the board's role to make the decision that might cause it to go back. I don't want a committee then to be second guessing the board and what their decision is just on the basis of the feedback. That to me is the board's role and then that feedback goes back to the committee. So I feel that part of the process. But I, to, they felt that there were some other points that they wish had been made. And I'm going to give them that opportunity, bullet those out, but we'll go to be advertised with the calendar so people know why, what's the rationale for the change and still may have an opportunity, a voice if they disagree with that for other reasons. I mean, that's the reason for the feedback and we certainly have gotten a lot of feedback and.
There's some concern about why we didn't have the second, I was just going to say, calendar on, on the 14th, 18th because it was on the previous one.
It was, but I think the committee was prepared to take the feedback and make the adjustment for next year. So they weren't prepared to do it for the following and I think that's fair. Let them, they have concerns and so they may deliberate and who knows what their recommendation will be, but they'll be convened again for the following year and you will receive the bullets for the reasons for that recommendation, whatever it is, so that there can be a discussion. Because there's no requirement, it's just been in our practice to do two years in a row, but there's no requirement. You just need to have the calendar in place for the following year. So they chose to do one and then they want to discuss it further for the year after.
So I understand that is because of, one, we obviously were on a timeframe, we need to get 16, 17 out, but there are concerns about any adjustments that have been put forward, so.
I just think they, they felt comfortable, they would make the recommendation for next year's calendar. They didn't want to go further than that. They wanted to have some time to think and to discuss and to make a recommendation because, and I thought that was fair.
And are most districts going to be far ahead of us this next year?
And that's part of probably one of the data points, how many days more instruction, did some of those. I mean, they want to collect some further data now that we will be one of the later starting school districts in the state. And they probably want to see if there's impact on that. There was concern in terms of getting midterm, mid-year for your seniors' grades to the universities. That's always a challenge. So I think part of it is to see how this works out. Are there issues so that they have a clear understanding before making the recommendation for the following year?
But at least now I can send out an email and people write in as to why, I can tell them why. Thank you.
All right. The proposed, this Caroline.
Five and, both five and six, Roy, I don't expect you to sit here and tell me what the effect of the proposed new state standards and the drop in high school graduation rates. But I, my understanding is how we've worked in the past is we bring it up here and then we have a presentation on it and a workshop on camera at another time. So I'd like to know how, and that is if at least three of us agree that they want to hear it. So I'd like to know how the new state standards have affected our.
You're talking about last year's FSA assessment?
Correct. And how it has affected us. And what happened with our graduation rates.
And I could tell you a little bit of the initial analysis on the graduation rate. Part of it was, we had a, this past year's graduates had a larger number of ESE students. It seemed that the ESE student category, whether they, they received special diploma or did not receive a diploma, either way, they don't get counted and it was a year where we had an increased number. But we're continuing to analyze and to talk with other districts. Part of it is the methodology sometimes used in, in handling some of the data. So we're asking districts what they're doing and trying to understand that, what options we have available. So certainly we can, as we get clarification in our current process, which frankly, although they expected it might not be as good as it was last year, they didn't think they would see that, they felt it would be pretty close. And so they were, our high schools were disappointed that they saw a drop because the strategy they had used previously that caused us to have the highest we ever, have ever had in terms of graduation, they had continued to use that strategy. So it's student by student, tracking each one of them down, so.
And we took the GEDs out, so that was a bump a few years ago, right? We aren't counting our GED students.
So the only thing they know right now is that there was an increase in the number of special education for ESE students and those don't count as graduates with a special diploma. So, but we'll be happy to do presentations in terms of analysis of the state data. You've received all the FSA data, but it's not, that past data, they didn't apply it with the cut scores, the proposed. So now we have a sense of, of how we did with our cut scores and that's what is going to be applied with the school grades, which will probably come out around February 9th.
And that was my next one, how new cut scores will affect the students. So we combine them both together.
Certainly. I mean, we can do a presentation, although just know that the, for the individual students, these cut scores will not apply. So in other words, the third grade promotion was not based on this cut score and it will never be applied to that year. But we've applied them just for informational purposes of how we're doing. And understand that this was a more rigorous test. The cut scores are more rigorous and so across the state, there has been a drop in terms of performance that was expected. But I think our relative performance to the other districts appears to be about the same.
I, I would like to see perhaps a report from each of our executive directors on the high school, middle school, and elementary, not perhaps even on the same day, but that, you know, this is how our schools are doing. And, you know, this is what we're doing. We, we don't go over the individual school improvement plans. But I'd like to know what the executive directors have for the district improvement plan. directors have for the district improvement plans or anything that they're seeing. You know, I don't want to see all the individual schools, but if there's a school that is an outlier, you know, report to me how you're addressing that, or if there's a school that is doing much better than, you know, some of the other, what they're doing, and is there anything that we can do to replicate that? I mean, I'd like to hear from our executive directors how, how each group is doing, and, and I don't know if we can get a report on how charter schools are doing too.
We could, we certainly have the data. We've been cautious about, I mean, the cut scores were just approved.
Yes.
So we've been doing some analysis that really can't be public, because it's, was with proposed cut scores, and we're also mindful that we grouped the results of these schools into the different levels, but that's not for the individual students. Now, when they do school grades, that will apply, and you'll get a sense in terms of our school grades, how the schools perform. But we can certainly do that next level of analysis.
When are those grades coming?
February 9 is when they can, so it'll be February, it can't be earlier than February 9. It may be February 9 or a day or so afterwards, because that's when the new proposed rule goes, is in place. So it's already been approved, but it takes a while for.
So to get anything in February, but March would be the earliest we could have a report, so maybe let us know whether, that our next workshop, whether we're going to do that in March or perhaps April, if we can't get it by March, but I'd like to see it by March if possible.
And it's good that.
Does, does everybody agree with that?
And it's good that Pam Stewart was able to, you know, get the state board to buy her ideas, because there were some proposals on the table that were, if this is bad, were really, really worse, 70% and so forth, Nathan, and adding all of those things and so.
Well, at our, our, what are we having tomorrow?
Complications.
No, not a complication. We're, we're having the session with the other school districts, a, a.
Joint school.
Regional, joint school board meeting. John Cologne, who was on the state board, is now on the Manatee County School Board. And one of the things that we're looking at is, is how we all look at the legislative process and how the districts differ in how they do it, but also the different associations, and it might be interesting to hear from Mr. Cologne what the state school board, he's not on there now because he.
Right.
What they were looking forward to, or what their proposals were for the state for the coming year. I think we're in a unique opportunity, and like Dave Minor is a chair of, or the, of one of the associations, S U, and we've got, so it might be interesting to hear what the different associations are looking at.
I'm prepared.
Great.
I'm ready. I, I do have a question, or maybe more of a comment on what Caroline has said as far as the drop in high school graduation rate, and I'm not sure if we, so just to make sure I understand correctly, can, because I agree with her, I'd like to hear from staff or whatnot, what happened in more of a detailed information from the, you know, inside the chamber, so we can kind of follow it and address it, because I think that's one of the more critical areas.
Yeah, I think that's where we're going to have, the high school, the middle school, and elementary school, I think, the different associations, the different executive directors come and tell us, correct?
And I, and I would, would also ask, Lori, if we might have some of our diversified population, our Hispanic population and our African American population, and other, others mentioned in that too, so that we not only have an overall.
Closing the achievement gap.
Yeah, exactly. How are we doing with that?
Are those all, is that, is that a robust day or?
Well, you have to just be cautious of.
These scores.
This year, because you don't have the comparison, they kind of sit on their own.
Exactly.
So to.
It's going to be bad for that too.
To do a lot of comparison might bring you the wrong conclusions. I mean, certainly we, the gap is still there, but to compare it to FCAT and FSA, the percentage differences, that's harder to really decipher.
Right.
So we can focus on how do they perform this year, or this past year, on the FSA. We can look at the, the graduation rate information. That's also a challenge. It's just a difficult, to identify the cohort, it's very hard to replicate. It's like you can't get a list, we wish we could get a list of, these are the students that didn't make it and what happened to them, because it's, it's much more complex. But they're doing the, we're doing analysis now, so they can give us what we've been able to see, but remember, it was an adjustment that still was an increase over the, two years ago. It just wasn't as big as that last year, which was extraordinary for us. But we can give you the analysis that, what we've seen.
And even by March, if we do it March or April, we'll even have some input on how the tests are going this year.
Right.
You know, if we're having computer crashes and whatnot.
Yeah, we'll have some anecdotal, which, yes.
It makes you look even better.
See, I think that this is an important discussion for our community as well, so we know what's happening.
No, I think those are the, one of the more critical things that people ask about you, even in the newspaper or whatnot, and we can see exactly where we stand, understanding we're not comparing it this year, but where do we start, where are we standing from a starting point, what are we looking at for going ahead, and really kind of putting that, I like that idea.
Okay. Seven, change in special education laws, Caroline.
I'm sorry, this is Caroline's show.
Yeah, I was thinking that too.
Sometimes it's a Shirley show, last time.
Yeah.
I'd like to know how ESEA, the passage of ESEA has impacted our schools.
Well, what we know right now is that the states have been given a little bit more authority in the monitoring of schools. They will set some criteria of when a state has to intervene in a turnaround school kind of situation. That's not been determined yet, that's kind of the rule part that is not set. There is, appears to be a little more emphasis on English language learners in terms of funding, they show a, more of an increase of federal funding, but some accountability with English language learners. So kind of not a lot that we see specifically, because we don't anticipate the state making any major changes. Certainly, they, their accountability system has been modified on the most recent proposal, so that is a modification, a simplification of the school grading, which is kind of the accountability program in, in the state. But remember, they, for those schools that were going to be double F and kind of that met the mandate of NCLB, that was a transition year, so they were not moving forward with that. They were going to still provide the support for schools that are in multiple Fs or, and different level of support for schools that are a D, but they're not doing the, any restructuring requirements, so they, in the transition, they removed that. Our school district wasn't involved with that, we didn't have any schools in that category. So the state then has some ability to change that, if they would so choose some of the criteria based on the reauthorization. We've seen nothing to tell us that that's going to occur.
Are they going to do anything about, you know, we put a lot of emphasis on low E, low economic students, and also those with two or under, so we monitor their growth. Said it was 59% this year, up to and under, and next year it's 57%. Are we still doing that?
We're still as part of the school improvement plan, focusing on groups of students that don't meet at least that 70% bar, so I mean, we're internally doing that as part of the school improvement plan. The state still has their criteria that's really is not by disaggregated group, but by school grades, but when they provide support, they do look at the disaggregated group. We still report it all by the disaggregated groups and monitor that economically disadvantaged are included as part of that.
And now the title on funding is still coming, based on the school percentage of students living in poverty, it's not.
Correct.
You know, on a student by student basis still.
No, it is still.
It's by the school.
Distributed in order of the highest percentage, where you're serving that level of student.
I'm not canceling mine, because I got more information and I'm good.
Oh, good, then I'll come.
Well, tell us.
Do they wear a jersey?
They're working on doing this.
They're working on it still.
Oh, it's still working.
I think they met again today. Okay, that's, that's the best news.
Can you give us enough, what was it?
People are working on it, is that can be here? Remember, the PSC committee, a part of your policy, requires that review. They have met once.
They're reviewing.
They've gotten all the information, including the feedback of the board, things that other districts are doing, they are meeting again, so they're not ready to make a recommendation for changes. But I expect that that will happen in the fairly near future, depending on how many meetings they require to make those changes, and then it'll come back to the board for your consideration, but they'll probably present it in some kind of workshop form. There were.
I have one more, several.
Okay.
What are we doing with social workers? I understand two more are retiring this year, and we didn't replace Robin Marinelli's position, so where, what are we doing? Are we keeping social workers or?
We're still posting, we posted the social workers, and some, sometimes internal people will apply for that and can't transfer right in, but I mean, those, we have not, whenever we have a vacancy, a true vacancy, we're posting them. We had a bilingual, we have another retiree coming up that, at the end of the year, that will be a bilingual, I guess, social worker. So that's continuing. Robin Marinelli's position until we get a robust list of people applying for it, they're, they have not seen in the screening process, you don't move forward unless you think that we've got some good candidates to, to select from, and so they're just not ready to make that recommendation until they feel that they've got a good group of people to pick from.
There's been some concern among the social workers, that, are they being phased out?
I don't, I don't know why they would feel that way, because we've posted, we've given permission, it comes to cabinet, we've posted every vacancy that has skirted.
Okay.
One of the other things that, I, I took them off the list, because I didn't want to scare you away with a long list, but was to distribute these job descriptions. I didn't think we would have time to discuss the job descriptions, because we had such a long agenda, and, and I don't even think we should discuss it now, because we haven't had a chance to look at it. But I worked with Karen Carpenter and Barbara Rendell with Charlotte County, they were a little concerned, they somehow thought we were getting together to set a legislative agenda for the three counties. That wasn't what I was thinking, and, and that wasn't what Karen, Karen Carpenter was thinking, she's the chair of Manatee County, but to get an agenda out that we just put legislative, but some of the things she would like to answer was, she says, what I'm thinking, and we say first hour, it's, it probably will go longer than an hour, discussion on effective legislative contact communication process, answering discussions, questions, answering and discussing questions like, what is our experience with lobbyists, do we have one, do we, how do we measure their effectiveness? How do we work with part of a larger entities like FSBA, Central Florida School Boards Coalition, and the South Florida Group? And she thought that greater consortium was a South Florida, I guess it is South Florida, but we think of South Florida as Miami, but they think of South Florida as us. And, and what the relationship with the chamber and the workforce development plays, and what roles do the staff play and the board members, and what does part of the affiliation do with that, some of those things. But what we looked at.
Change from the one that you sent out?
The agenda that we sent out, it said legislative communication.
Broad.
It was a very broad issue. I just thought I would share with you some of the questions that Barbara thought that we should be asking, so we rolled these around.
Barbara's coming though, right?
Not Barbara, Karen.
Karen.
But that, that's sort of what, what it's going to be a discussion on. And then, what were those other issues that we were looking at? I don't remember right offhand, but she had lots of other things. I said, well, let's wait and see how much time we have left after that, because I think, you know, when she said to John Cologne, and we've got questions on that, and then Lee Swift is going to talk about some of those other things. So that was kind of where we were with the holidays and everything, it was kind of hard to pull something together, and I wasn't hearing anything from y'all that particularly wanted to talk about.
I didn't know you wanted input.
Well, I think you asked for items, we talked about it in here.
Yeah.
I think so.
We have any more business right now?
So we do other.
One other, other that was going to be part.
Frankly, it's been a while.
Of the superintendent's job description that also you need to be thinking about is, I'm going to need some input in terms of your preference in determining the search firm.
Yes.
Because if it is over, if the cost is over $50,000, then you must go for a bid process, a competitive solicitation. It doesn't have to be the bid process like purchasing, it'll look different.
Financial services agreement?
Well, no, it's really, you have to do a competitive solicitation if it's over $50,000. So now typically, I'm, we can tell from, because I don't know what the cost is for like FSBA, which is, a lot of districts use FSBA, so it must be less than $50,000, or they would be doing a bid process.
It's 30.
I think, it was 30, and I don't know if it has changed, but that's still your decision whether or not you do that. If you do competitive solicitation, there have been a couple of districts that have done that. You can choose to piggyback, and we can get the details on what bids have been, there have been recently a couple of bid processes, you can piggyback with another district, or you could have to do your own. But I feel like by next meeting, I need to have an indication of which direction you want to go, so we can make appropriate plans.
Are we, so, and I'm sorry, forgive me, are we going to, I thought in our retreat we discussed potentially having a whole superintendent discussion at an upcoming workshop, and then I think we postponed it.
Well, it was on, first it was on December, and then that got canceled.
Right.
And then we put it on this one, and there was concern that there wasn't enough time, and you would probably need time to review the superintendent. So I think I can put it on the next workshop.
Next month.
Next month, so that, but I wanted you to, to tell you that you need to really give me some direction on that point by February, so we can begin to work towards that.
Okay. Okay. We start adjourned.